Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Mayor and City Council Workshop Wednesday, September 3, 2025. If you'd please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Hi, of the United States of America, and to the public which stands one nation, proud and invisible, liberty and justice for all.
Please show all members of council present. Up next, we have review of the minutes from the August 6, 2025, and August 11, 2025, regular meetings. Any comments, questions, concerns by council? Hearing none, I am proceeding forward to reception of delegations. CQI Associates LLC Electric Supply Service Contract, if you'd please come on up.
Good evening. I've left on the counter with you the latest market chart and the pricing sheets that we received as of today for both options that we discussed the last time, the all-in fixed-price contract and the energy-only with capacity transmission pass-through option. I'd like to just look at the September 3 market chart that's here that looks like this. All of you have it. When we last talked, you know, we were basically saying that, you know, the market seemed to be peaking at one point and then that there was an eventual downturn, that the market price that we've been looking at to try to not exceed an all-in fixed price was the 10, 6, 8, 7 that you see highlighted. Since we last met, though, what I did, we did is we added a couple lines here. The red line on the left side basically shows that the market is in an upward trend, and it's right there, councilman, right here in the...
I have it.
There's one, it's right in the front, on the edge of the...
They printed it in the...
Oh, right there. Do you both have them? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. The red line basically shows that since 2023, we've been in a market upward trend, and I think you all tried to note that the last time we talked. And then, you know, what would be happening in the future, it looks like then there is an eventual downward trend, that's the black line on the right side. And I think it's interesting to note that the traders and everybody that is in this, this is an active trading thing off the floor, so the wholesalers are trading their price to the retailers. So this is what the price of electricity is. It actually, the change seems to occur in the November, December, 26 timeframe. But I also think it's interesting to note that right now, in this current period, that where that price is at a 9, 9, 4, 5 to the little black line that's basically showing the end, the period here, we are still in a very severe upward trend. And I think that upward trend is also showing that's not going to end until August, September of '26. So, you know, we're continuing to look forward, look at pricing, but your contract ends in December. We had the warmest, second-warmest July on the record. We've now had one of the mildest Augusts on record. We are at a market bottom for the short term. So we're seeing better pricing today than we did over the last five months. And so the updated pricing sheet that you have, the three sheets, the pages that you have there, kind of tell you where we are at this point. By the way, since we last spoke, Potomac Edison has now announced their rate has gone up from the 10, 02, 01 to now the 12, 07, which reflects the same capacity transmission price increase that we're seeing on regular pricing, also in their pricing. So just to remind you, on the first page, we did competitive bids. We got bid from six major companies, both for the all-in fixed price and the energy-only with capacity and transmission pass-through. And if you look in the first summary where it says all-in fixed for 12 months, it shows a rate of 9, 6, 3, 6. So what does all-in fixed mean? That means that every component in the supply cost chart, that's the base energy, capacity, transmission, renewable energy portfolio, all the other fees are fixed, locked, they can't change throughout the course of the contract. The next thing you see is energy only. It says energy-only bid, low bid. That would be the price that would be on the contract at the 6, 3, 2, 4. And then capacity and transmission would be estimated based on each account's rate, and that rate estimate has gone up slightly to the 3, 2. So your, our budget number that we would want you to look forward to, if you did the energy-only with capacity and transmission, would be the 9, 5, 2, 4. So everybody see that. Energy only, the only pieces that are fixed are the energy and some of the fees. Capacity, transmission, renewable energy portfolio standard, what you're building KW, not KWH, would continue to pass through. There would be some budget stability, but not 100% budget stability in doing that option. Before I stop, does everybody remember and understand the two options that we've looked at as we move forward? Okay. So that's the 12 months. The next page, you should see 18 and 24 months. 18 months goes up slightly, 24 months comes down to a 9, 5, 5, 7 for the all-in fixed, and in 9, 4, 6, 0. Just to tell you, it looks in this analysis that the all-in fixed and the energy-only, the capacity pass-through are almost the same rate as we kind of move forward. 30 months, we get a 9, 5, 4, 6, a little higher. 36 months, interesting enough, is a 9, 4, 7, 6. And that really kind of reflects this chart here, where we see this backwards downward turn as the market progresses forward. In our executive summary update that we gave you, and where we are at this moment, it is our recommendation that you consider only the all-in fixed option because it provides you the budget stability. The energy-only variable is so minor and still has some volatility that I think it would be in your best interest to consider looking at that. I do have another summary sheet that just shows you all for, all of the energy-only together. I think I should pass that out, or will you?
I think everybody's following along with that.
Okay, following along, okay. A 24-month is a good recommendation, but I'd strongly like you to look at the 36 as you look at the forward numbers, given that since we started back when we first did it with Jim in the beginning of March to now, that number has consistently come down. So that's where we think you should be today. I recommend that you go ahead and consider going forward with the contract now versus waiting. We've been real fortunate. We have no hurricanes coming in, but all we need is one or two hurricanes here in October, November, or some other hiatus occurring. It does look like that we're going to have a moderate winter, fall, but we could have a real hard winter. And so I think making a decision now is in your best interest, but I will defer to you all because this is now your decision. My recommendation is definitely do 24, but strongly consider the 36.
Yep. I'm going to open this up to council here in a moment, but I'm just going to give my recommendation from the mayor's office as well, is going to be all-in fixed 36-month before I open that up to council. So council, I'll let you take away for questions if you have any. But that's my recommendation from the...
I was going to say, I don't really have questions, kind of, other than do they have an idea of what might be happening in November of '26 that they think it's going to be a knee in the graph there? Because I don't see us bringing any more generation online anytime soon in this state.
I think it's just kind of odd that that numbers all are colliding on that November date. And the only thing that's really out there in November is something else called a midterm election.
But even...
I think it's just kind of interesting. I mean, I didn't draw this that way. It just kind of shows up that way.
No, no, I get, I get that. But what I'm saying is that even if there's a change, if there's a change at the state level, it's, it's not going to be able to make any change by then. So I'd go, I too am on the 36.
But just the one thing is, now they're collecting the money. Now they're going to start making the infrastructure improvements. I think that that might be another point in which we will start to see some regulatory improvement in the downside. In Texas, remember they had the, that winter vortex. Everything fell apart. It was awful. Their rates really went up. Now, after two and a half years, their rates are coming down. The infrastructure is now improved. They're, you know, they've gotten through the process. They stood up and got it done right. So it's a good example. California is kind of in the same position. So it takes about two to three years for the, to fall through the process.
Oh, I was just going to give a couple context things that, because you asked, why does it start to invert around at the end of 2026? So like, you have at least two things that people are kind of expecting. One, the Russia-Ukraine war is expected to probably be over by then. But then also, at the moment, you have like global demand for, what is it, liquid natural gas has spiked over the last like year, and that's expected to continue through '26 at least. But they think that that'll start to smooth out. And the AI data centers that are drawing more energy demand over the next like year or two are also expected to start smoothing out in the next like year or two. So just in general, like they don't think that they're going to have the same demand shocks that they're, we're starting to see, which is one of the reasons why prices have been skyrocketing over the last couple of years. So that's kind of what's going on.
I, I just, I look at it from the supply side as opposed from the demand side and just the fact that we're not going to do any more economical supply.
OPEC is also so that they're going to increase their output of like oil per day, what is it, some, some number of millions of gallons per day or whatever it is.
That's kind of inconsequential to the, to the electricity market because we don't, we don't burn a lot of oil for electricity. It's virtually all coal and natural gas.
And natural gas, which is expected to, like I said, like they, they, the markets generally think that it's going to cool off in like a year or two when something happens. I don't know exactly what it is, but, but that's, that's the expectation right now.
The exports have been down almost 15% this last quarter.
Have they?
Yeah. So that's a good news, that's good news. The exports overseas.
I think you're going to see a lot of, again, legislation push leading up to the midterm strike, bring those rates down to get it off of people's pockets. Because again, there's going to be a lot of pressure there. But regardless, again, I'm looking at the 36.
I'm 36.
Yeah, I mean, I'm good with the 36. It's the only thing that makes sense based on these, on these numbers. So, you know, if they're, if they're willing to lock in at that, I, you know, I kind of, I'm still on that train of not believing a drop, you know, in this. But if you're willing to price it basing, based on the fact that you believe there's going to be a drop, hey, have at it. You know, I just, and I'm certainly for the all-in because frankly, I just don't know what's going to happen with PJM and, and capacity.
Yeah, well, their infrastructure costs are significant. Like they have tons of stuff that's 30, 40 years old that they need to replace. So like they're, I agree with you. It wouldn't surprise me if they do need to increase their rates again so that they can, they can start replacing some of that like ancient infrastructure. So I'm on the same page as you there.
To me, it's a no-brainer to stay on the 36 all-in.
Go down consensus 36. Probably Dean, or do you want a motion?
Um, if we can...
Contract that we have to approve, or will there, will there be a contract that comes back for us to approve?
Typically, what happens is there'll be a contract and you, somebody is authorized to sign either the mayor or Jim.
I mean, if we had consensus to enter the contract, I don't know if we necessarily need a motion for it.
As long as it's in the minutes that, that I'm authorized to execute the 36-month all-in contract, we can go with that.
unanimous consensus.
I think, yeah, unanimous consensus. Well, again, when the contract comes up...
So Jim, what we'll do is tomorrow, I'll let the supplier, WG, always the winner this time, we will let them know they should be able to get a contract tomorrow. We'll finalize the 70-something accounts. And is it your signature or would it be Jim's?
Could be my signature over the 25, yeah.
Okay. So if I could, do you?
I'll be in tomorrow.
You'll be here tomorrow? Okay. We just need the email, so we'll do DocuSign?
That works, yeah.
That works? Good? Okay. All right. So sometime after 11, between 11 and 1, the contract will come out to you.
Sounds good.
Well, thank you all very much for considering, for everything. We're here. If you need anything, we'll be doing quarterly reviews again to, just to try to make sure everything is okay. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Richard.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Up next, we have council member statement regarding conflicts of interest on agenda items. Would any council member like to make a statement today? Hearing none, I'm proceeding forward. Public comment pertaining to agenda and non-agenda items. If you have a comment to a specific agenda item, please sign up with the clerk and you'll be asked to come forward at the appropriate time. Other than that, it is now open to public comment pertaining to both agenda and non-agenda items.
If you'll bear with me, there are people here that weren't here the first time I came in here to the meetings. My brother, I'm Dick Hall, H-U-L-L. My brother Don and I bought a property called Meadowbrook back in 1994. I never, in my wildest dreams, imagined I'd be here over 30 years later. But anyway, at the time, Meadowbrook property was 279 home sites. The adjoining property was under contract by Marilyn Midland, and it was owned industrial. Everybody knows the history there. Since changed to residential, and now we have Meads Crossing. But prior to Meads Crossing coming to being, Meadowbrook built a stormwater management facility, 4.3 acres. At the time, the town's policy was not to take stormwater management facilities that were jointly operated between commercial and residential. It's always been that if you had a residential project, the town took it over totally upon completion and certification and go through all the engineering stuff. Anyway, that's all history. Meadowbrook is finished. Meads Crossing is finished. It's a total residential facility. Meads Crossing has substantially enlarged and increased pond that we built back in 1991. So, or I'm sorry, 2001. So that's brief history. Any, everybody up to speed on that, or any questions I can answer there?
Actually, yeah. You said that the building of Meads increased the...
I'm sorry, my ears are really bad.
You said the building of Meads increased the size of the pond?
Yes.
Meads has a stormwater, a smaller stormwater pond that is connected to the larger one. I'm assuming it runs off. I think that's what you're talking about earlier.
Yes. Well, and, and I think the capacity of the main pond was increased as well. But there's, there's a...
If you, if you look at it, there's a triangular shaped like original pond, and then there's the extra pond that Meads, Meads put that kind of has like a single overflow drain into the big pond.
Yes, four-vay kind of operation. So we're here to ask you folks to culminate the last thing that I need to do on Meads Cross or on Meadowbrook. This is it, our last section. We've gone through our two-year program on the roads. The road's been turned over to the city. And, you know, I guess I want to thank the old timers that have been here for a while. And it's been a good relationship over the years. We didn't enjoy our real estate vacation from '07 through '16 or '17. But we made it through, and it's all turned out very well. Sorry, my brother Don's not around to see the finalization on this thing. He passed in '16. I'm asking you to accept the stormwater management facility into the town. I think you've already acted on the Meads Crossing aspect of it. So there's Meads Crossing parcel that wraps around our original parcel. They're, what's known as their parcel D, copying the entire facility. Then they have separate parcels that are not contiguous, which is, we're not involved in. This is strictly Meadowbrook that I'm asking about tonight. And Meadowbrook has been collecting dues from our 279 homeowners. And we have an accumulated kitty there in a separate checking account of over $19,000. Now, the arrangement that we talked with Jim and with your, with Jay is that that money will come to the town along with the deed, as long as we have enough money left to pay our bills. We have a corporation that has to be closed, and, and we have several documents that are currently being prepared. So out of that $19,700 and some odd dollars right now, we're probably going to spend about $1,500 to close our business out and actually make that corporation go away. We have an agreement, I think, that Jay, Jim forwarded to you, that was prepared by Jay. That's pretty simplistic, but basically you get the land and the money, and at 83 and 3/4, I can finally retire. I don't say I'm 83 anymore. It's like the old George Carlin thing. I'm 83 and 3/4.
Start counting quarters after a while. I'm sorry. Start counting quarters after a while.
After October, I'm going to start counting by the month. I've been very fortunate, very fortunate. But anything, any questions I can answer?
Before I open it up to council, I just want the city manager to give you a recommendation on it, just so they can hear what your recommendation is before.
Yeah. Certainly, my recommendation is to accept the pond. It would be consistent with our practice for residential subdivisions. And, you know, as I shared this afternoon by email, as Mr. Hall mentioned, you know, the, the communities or the development this pond serves changed from when it was initially envisioned and the corporation was established. So accepting it is part of our routine for residential subdivision. It's no longer the pond, no longer, you know, didn't end up serving any commercial or industrial properties. So this is really being consistent with our overriding policy of accepting the residential ponds.
And so before I turn it back over to council, again, you guys can choose to accept it tonight. There's really not all too much to it, or you can choose to wait till Monday. Fine with either, because I know we did get it to you at the last minute. But while we have the gentleman here opening up the Florida questions for council, if you guys got anything.
And I do just want to point out also that we have the separate agreement because, because of the way things were structured initially, the public works agreements didn't reflect the city's acceptance of the pond. That's typically part of our public works agreement for a residential subdivision. But again, because this started to follow a different model early on.
We accepted Meads, for instance.
Right. Yes, exactly. The way we accepted Meads was pursuant to their public works agreement, and that was all spelled out before anything was built. You know, as the plans were going through, the discussion would be ongoing about, you know, what infrastructure the city will and won't take. And with Meads, it was pretty standard, you know, water, sewer, stormwater, roads. So, but we, again, Meadowbrook was different because of that former industrial use. So that's why you have a separate agreement instead of it being embedded in the public works agreement.
Questions from council? Anybody?
I saw the email like as I was coming here, so I didn't have a chance to look at it, like really look at it.
I mean, I'm good with waiting till Monday, just as long as everybody gets their questions addressed tonight. If you got anything?
But the only question I had was the, it says in the agreement, $19,000 less the cost of the property transfer. But I think you just mentioned that you need to take some money out of that also to, for, probably for attorney's fees for closing out the corporation. So does that part also need to be spelled out then in the agreement?
I, I think that would be considered part of the transfer process.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just being overly picky with that. But yes, I mean, I, you could, you could certainly say that.
I mean, we, right, we, if you...
I just wanted to make sure it was understood.
The deeds are currently being prepared, and they'll be approved by Jay.
Right. So, but the property transfer, closing out the corporation is not really a cost of the property transfer as a separate cost, but it's part of the whole deal. So, you know, I just want to make sure that that's clearly in there, that it's clearly understood that, that that cost is also being, coming out of the $19,000.
Well, again, if the property is tied to the corporation, the closure of the corporation then becomes part of the transfer into the property, because the property has to go somewhere when the closure of the business happens.
But having said that here, it's now on record that that's part of the process and we're clear.
Right. That is, right, that is what we intended.
The money is actually the property of the Tawny Town Stormwater Management Association. So they don't have any other money other than what's in that fund. And whatever it is, you guys get it when we're done, and we're not going to spend anything. We don't have to. We had a requirement from, from Kevin Schmeek and CDM to do some cleaning up on, out there. And so we're paying that, I think our portion of that's only less than $300. But that's in that $1,500 estimate I'm talking about. That'll be reduced from that thing. Whether you pay the recording fees, I pay them out of that and give you less money. It really doesn't matter. It's a wash.
Instead of coming from the same, yeah. Additional comments, questions, concerns? We'll look to, I'll put this on the, we'll put this on the agenda for Monday to get up for motion to be accepted or approved. And yeah, appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. And, and again, thank you all for a 30-year career here, I guess.
Little did you know.
Are you fully retiring?
Oh, yeah. No, I retired from, I actually own Carroll Land Services. And I retired from there in '07 when I was 65. '07, real estate was really doing well.
Yeah.
The next six months.
About the next five.
Something happened.
And brother Don and I were anticipating being done in about three or four or five years because we had half of it on the ground at that time, and the other half was just weeds at the time. So we wanted to get it done over the next four or five years, but that didn't work out. So we reshaped and reworked. It all came together, but it took 30 years. So again, I want to thank everybody for your cooperation. Jim's been great to work with and a few people that aren't with us anymore, you know. Also, we really had a good year, good trip. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Up next, we have resolution ordinances and agreements. Or actually, any more public comment? Not doing public comment. I am proceeding forward to resolution ordinances and agreements, adoption ordinance 18-2025 Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. These are the changes that we are making that we brought up last month. Any additional comments, questions, concerns? Hearing none, proceeding forward. Ordinance 19-2025 fiscal year 2025 budget amendment number three. Again, this is what we introduced last month. Questions, comments, concerns?
I just, I was looking at this trying to balance the numbers in my head, and for some reason it wasn't coming out. I'm not really sure. So we had increase to the general fund, that's not the fund balance, that's just, that's the operating general fund of $500,000, $515,000?
That's, let's see.
Amendment three.
Increase in, right, street repairs using highway use revenues from fund balance. So on the... Right. So on the revenue side for the general fund, we had underestimated tax revenue, so we're increasing that $250,000. And then we're taking $236,110 from fund balance, which is coming from the highway user revenue, to get $486,110 increase in the revenue side. That's... Oh, okay. On the, on the expense side, sorry, I initially missed the decrease of $29,000. That's why the figure, that's why the 515, the 515 and the 29 will net to 486,110. But I'll double-check it real quick.
Right. All right. All right. So all that matters. I just, I wasn't, I'm not an accountant, so which side of ledgers things?
At a glance, when you look at that pink row, it's, yeah, it's easy to not catch that, so.
Yeah, the 515 is after the 29 decrease.
Yeah. It just, like I said, just because accounting terms tend to blow my mind sometimes.
So, right, so the...
Difference between credits and dividends.
The 515 less the 29 gives you the one, the 46.
When is the credit money in or money, uh, give me straight numbers. I'm an engineer.
Any additional comments, questions, concerns by council?
No, sir.
Proceeding forward to ordinance 20-2025 fiscal... Proceeding forward to ordinance twenty dash twenty twenty-five fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget amendment number one. Task force, and we went over this for introduction last month. Additional comments, questions, concerns by council? None, proceeding forward. City manager report, Jim?
I need to run through the, uh, report in your packet real quick. So, we do have, and we'll talk a little bit more about this later, but we do have the draft Streets and Stormwater Management Facilities Manual ready for you. We, we thought it'd be, would be good to give you guys a little bit of time to digest it and, you know, come up with any questions over the next month. And then, the plan would be to do a resolution as part of next month's agenda to adopt the, the new manual. So, uh, we'll, we'll get into the manual a little bit more under, I guess, new business. We've also had some, as far as charter and code changes, had some talks about the restricted industrial district. And, you know, we did kick some ideas around at the recent planning commission meeting. And, uh, a couple of our manufacturers have expressed interest in there being the ability to have some flex, some flexible zoning that would allow things. And, and two of our bigger manufacturers both had mentioned wanting to have a, a potentially a daycare facility, you know, in close proximity to their manufacturing operations. And some other service type businesses that their employees would, would patronize is something that some of our manufacturers are, are looking for. Among them would be Flowserve, who we are, you know, in talks with regarding the road alignment crossing their property. And what they have been really looking for is not so much a, you know, a price per acre, but things that would help their employees. So, they are looking for some flexibility in the zoning code. They're looking for things like, uh, you know, making sure that if the Mountain Brook Farm community comes to fruition, that there be a pedestrian connection between Flowserve and the trail network in Meads, or, I'm sorry, Mountain Brook, and, um,
Or later.
You know, and, and they're, they're currently, uh, working with the same developer on a different project, Garnet Ridge, where they are, um, you know, have given a utility easement across the front of the property along Route one forty. And, um, again, they didn't ask for, you know, X per acre. They said, "Well, give us a sidewalk there because our employees like to walk down to the park." So, we'll let you, you know, put your utilities in if you give us a sidewalk. So, it's, it's interesting to be dealing with those types of, of requests rather than cash. But, at any rate, those things have been under some discussion as far as zoning code updates. And, um, you know, I, I'm hoping that we may move forward enough to have some draft language before you next month, but I, I, I think there's gonna be some more discussion at the planning commission before we really nail down what that overlay might look like. And I, I did not mention before, as far as the flexible zoning, we are talking about potentially an overlay zone and not, um, not making it a by right, you know, variety of uses per the, the general district regulations. So, this will be a process where it would have to be designated for this overlay zone to allow that flexibility. So, we could say that there needs to be-
Why overlay as opposed to just overhauling zoning?
So, if you had a parcel, if you just updated the zoning code in general, you could put those uses anywhere within the district if they met the requirements. So, we may not- So, I think the, the idea is, you know, to give some flexibility, but not like completely open the door to uses that might be typically in, in downtown business or general business. You know, we want, we wanna kinda maintain the, the, the manufacturing sort of integrity, I guess, of, of the district. So, the idea of the overlay, you know, it may have a requirement that a certain portion of a property over so many acres be in use for manufacturing before these, like accessory type uses could be, could be done.
But doesn't that make it harder to give them the amenities that they want, or that they're looking for ultimately?
It is an extra step in the process, but I think it also stops the district from deteriorating into just like a general commercial district.
And we're talking to the county, for instance, of really trying to push for them looking at our industrial zone for them to build industrial. That's why we, we really don't want to dilute that by allowing all uses of the general. Pretty, it's a pretty significant amount of land.
At, at least if you, if you continue, if you look at it as far as our growth area, that, that adds, you know, another hundred and twenty acres to the potential industrial area. So, those are the things that we're, we're kicking around right now. So, we haven't put pen to paper yet on exactly what that list of different uses might be. I have reached out to Evapco to try to get some input from them. You know, hopefully, we will be meeting along with the developers of Mountain Brook Farm with Flowserve in the, in the not-too-distant future. So, we would like to have something to, um, at least a framework to present them on, you know, what, what sort of things we're entertaining.
Could we define a list of the things that we would be willing to allow and create? That is a list of special exceptions that they would have to go through the-
Yeah, that, I think is our next step.
Instead of a, instead of a whole zoning overlay, just, uh, just a list of special exceptions.
Right, that's, that's the first thing we need to do.
That is hard. Why, why wouldn't we just talk about things that we, we'd be okay with allowing in, in, in the area as opposed to-
We may not want it on every industrial property. You know, I, because, like, like Jim said, if you allow that as part of every industrial product, property, then you could get a lot of things kind of willy-nilly. If you create it as a special exception, then they have to go to the BZA to get approval for each individual exception, right?
Right, or if you did an overlay, it would apply, you know, to a specific property that requested that.
Because again, when, when you go for the special exception, the next question's gonna come is that special exception is gonna apply to that entire district essentially, the industrial, and what would happen next?
Those are property specific though, aren't they, special exceptions?
Yeah, with, with the special exception-
Yeah, the special exception going forward to get a special exception, but others could apply for it, and it would essentially become the same thing of, we'd have to show why wouldn't be a fit.
Right.
But if we allowed it for others through the special exception, that's just gonna create a, that's gonna create a whole nother problem.
With the special exception, there's a list of, I think, eight standards that you have to address. And among those is that allowing the special exception on the subject property would not be more detrimental to the district than allowing it on some other property. So, you know, each property is judged on its own merits when, when they're before the Board of Appeals, but, you know, but it's really basically saying, "It's not gonna do any harm here more than it would do over here." So, it's, it's not a really high standard to meet. So, it, it could be used, you know, very frequently. And I guess I, I mentioned in the written report, I think, also, yeah, I did mention solar. So, I'll use that as an example, that if you made solar a permitted use by right, and the state is very likely to preempt some of this anyhow, but, you know, you could see a proliferation of, you know, solar generation facilities throughout the restricted industrial district, which, you know, okay, it's a low-impact sort of use, which is great, doesn't use a lot of water, it doesn't use water and sewer, things like that. But it also doesn't create permanent jobs to any extent. It doesn't, you know, increase our, our, the assessed value of the property to the extent that developing a building would. So, you know, it may not be the best and highest use for what is within the county, a limited commodity of industrial land. So, again, you know, with allowing ground-mounted solar, we're thinking about it being ancillary or accessory to manufacturing. And again, that's something that some manufacturers have, manufacturers have discussed, you know, as a potential in their future land development. Flowserve was very interested in it, and I think there was some confusion when Carroll County rescinded the ability to put solar on agricultural land. I think Flowserve, there was some disconnect there, and they thought that they couldn't do solar on their property. And, um, and they kind of dropped the idea, but now they're interested again. And again, that's something that, you know, there's an existing manufacturing site on the property, but they have additional acreage that they may not ever use for additional manufacturing square footage. So, they could, you know, do solar panels on a portion of that to offset some of their energy costs. So, some of the things that we're talking about as far as code updates, more to come on that. We're still trying to figure out like what the list of uses should be. And, and, you know, some of the details as far as solar goes, like, you know, is there a proportion of the property that would be, you know, adequate to meet a manufacturer's needs but not become the principal use?
Yeah, I was about to say, is the goal to like ma, not allow them to basically build a solar farm as opposed to like some kind of like industrial manufacturing thing?
It's to be for need instead of a solar farm. The idea, in my opinion, would be to tie it to the square footage of where their main industrial facility is. That way, again, if, if they are building more industrial, and again, they need more, that does kind of expand how much more solar they can expand. But, again, the idea is not to be solar farms, the idea is to be a usage for that manufacturing facility.
And, and is, is this restriction, like, this restriction on like the undeveloped portion of their land? Or is this also a restriction on like, let's say they wanted to put it on their roofs? Like, are they not allowed to do that?
No, rooftop would, uh, our code is silent on solar, but we've been permitting rooftop solar for many years. I'm not aware of any industrial sites that are doing solar right now. We've had questions about ground-mounted solar on residential properties, but to the best of my recollection, no one has actually obtained a zoning certificate or a building permit to do that. So, thus far, it's all been rooftop. And, and I would say, you know, if any manufacturer came in tomorrow and wanted to do rooftop solar on their building, you know, I would approve that easily, so.
So, the holdup is just using undeveloped portions of their property to, to put-
Right, yeah, and, and I wouldn't, um, and, and I need to do some research and some homework on this because I believe that under a certain generating capacity, under so many megawatts, I think there is some state preemption that, you know, we can't say no to, you know, a solar generating facility under a certain threshold in Maryland.
Asking to only be expanding, so.
Right, so, so as part of Maryland's Renewable Energy Act, there were some regulations regarding solar and, and basically saying that it can go pretty much anywhere. So, while generally we can be more restrictive than the state government, you know, this is something where, you know, we are gonna be preempted, just like we can adopt our traffic laws.
They'll come back and say, "Oh, no, you can't do that." If they get too restrictive, if we try to be too restrictive, the state will come back and hammer us and say, "Oh, no, you can't do that."
But I think, um, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm really looking at this more to provide clarity than to say that, you know, than really to be restrictive. Right now, the code doesn't say anything about solar, so what are we supposed to do? Yeah, so I think if we can put something in there that provides some clarity and isn't in conflict with the state, you know, it's, it's easier for whoever is issuing zoning certificates and talking to manufacturers or developers or whomever, you know, if they have something in the code in front of them that they can refer to without having to go chase down COMR regs and stuff like that.
It has to say something about solar if they're not allowed to put solar on, on, on their industrial land, right?
Yeah, and, and thus far, we've kind of dodged that bullet.
Well, we've, yeah, we've just kinda dodged it.
I don't think we've had any request for it, have we?
Yeah, nobody's actually, well-
Right, we've had, we've had people express interest, but then no one has formally applied.
But technically, again, I don't think you could, I don't, I don't think they're currently limited to not be able to do it on industrial land, from my understanding.
And, you know, I have said before that, you know, I would treat it as, um, you know, now for like commercial industrial, depending upon the magnitude of it, you know, it, it would probably trigger our site plan process. So, we would, we would, you know, control some things like setbacks and things of that nature. But I would question, you know, is a, uh, you know, a frame for a row of solar panels, is that a, it's not a building, so is it subject to the regulations on setbacks and things like that, like a structure would be? So, I think there would be some, you know, rather open-ended questions for the planning commission and zoning administrator to ponder if somebody came in tomorrow with an application.
And the work towards this just kinda gives us a clear, a clear guidance to navigate as far as if somebody does bring it up. Again, luckily, we have been lucky that nobody's really pursued something larger thus far.
But I think if we can, you know, establish something that, you know, even if we start out with it saying that it's an, you know, an accessory use, you know, we can probably speak to setbacks and, and buffering or screening and things like that, that, um, you know, I think a lot of the objection to solar is aesthetics.
Myth or, yeah.
And, um, you know, so I, I think it would be helpful if our code could speak to some of that so that when we do get any que, a request, and I'm sure it, it, it's coming.
Yeah.
Because it seems like interest is only-
Only, only, it would be on the upswing. I think we can, you know, uh, set it up so that we can either limit percentage of open property that can be used for that, or eliminate to the amount of electrical uses that the facility itself is using, you know, so that they are really just generating for themselves. You know, that, so it doesn't become a commercial thing for them to put up enough solar panels to be able to sell.
Now they're making money for, by putting energy back into the grid.
Right, right, that's not the, that isn't, that isn't the point of what we want them to do. So, that, that would be where you would kind of ride that restriction or some combination of those. Uh, and then also, of course, screening restrictions, 'cause I can, uh, over in Hartford County, there's a farm, it's about a hundred and eighty acres, that has been completely taken as a, as a solar, you know, agricultural solar array, and it is the ugliest thing you have ever seen in your life.
I'd say, again, you tie it to the square footage of the developed land because the idea there would be, if they're developing more, that's more tax, that's a higher tax base for us, so there is no negative there to that. I will say again, I know the talk is the aesthetic of the solar. The hard part about this is it's the industrial district, right? Is industrial ever the most pleasing to the eye? It's not something you expect.
Well, and, and like my question on putting any of these kind of restrictions in is if they don't have any, any planned use to like expand their facilities or put a building on it, like, uh, to me, that would imply that they don't, they don't see a, a business need to, to pursue that kind of a, an expansion or a project, but they do see a business need to, I guess, flatten out their, their energy costs or reduce their energy costs over time. So, like, that is kind of their business need, and from a libertarian perspective, like, wouldn't, wouldn't, yeah, and I know it's not just you, I, I, you've liked to bring it up in the past, so like, like, if I, if I, if I put, if I put your glasses on and try and look at it from, from that lens, like, it, it kinda seems like we're really just putting more restrictions on some of our major businesses in the area, no?
Well, again, it's, it's because you're trying to, uh, direct what kind of, um, not direct, but incentivize the kind of development that you want to see.
We wanna see more buildings, more-
Right.
No, I, I, I get that, but if they own the land and they're not planning on, eh, they're not planning on using it for, to expand their, their capacity, then, then why wouldn't we allow them to, to use it for a need that they currently do see? And, and also in my mind, if they do see that they need to expand their capacity on, on their land in the future, they could tear it down and, and build, build that. It, it's not particularly costly to tear down a solar farm, like you just, shit. My, my brother-in-law would probably do it for, you know, ten thousand dollars and his-
For the scrap money.
Yeah, like, you know, like, so, like, I don't, I'm just having trouble wrapping my, my, my head around.
I think if you, if you open it up generally, what you're gonna see is that it is cost-effective for them to just build solar farms. It doesn't cost as much as to build the building, to add jobs or whatever, so that industrial land is slowly just gonna get absorbed by solar farms, because-
But if their demand increases, you would assume that they would have to expand their capacity by, by expanding buildings or, or doing whatever it is to, to, uh, uh, you know, be able to produce more of what they're doing, so, like, we wouldn't be restricting them from doing that.
The question is, are they building the solar farms now to just offset their energy costs? Or are they building them to make money? Because if, that's why we have to tie it to the building size, the developed land size, whatever, because that is tied to what they are actually developing for their business. As opposed to if you just say, "Hey, you know, you can have the solar in this district." As opposed to if you just say, hey, you know, you can have the solar in this district, what's gonna happen is you're gonna see people who see that it is more cost-effective just to build solar, sell it back into the energy grid, other than expand their business. And again, that, in, in actuality, you know, that helps their business regardless. Then they don't have to have the extra jobs and develop a bigger facility and whatnot.
And, and they're always free to develop carport and rooftop solar at their leisure.
Right.
It's just, it's just on the verge, on the virgin ground portion that we would wanna have.
I think the idea here is just to make sure that our industrial land, because it is limited in the county. And again, there, there has been a growing interest for industrial land in the county. We want to be open to that. This is that we don't want to see our industrial land ate up by solar. Because I think that's what you'd see, just because it's so, again, you can make money from it.
And, and it's also next door to a, a Padoma Gaddison substation.
Yeah.
A lot of it is, so.
What does that have to do, sorry, what is, what is it being next door to the substation?
Easy, easy way to transmit to the grid.
Got it, okay.
Um, something else that I didn't put this in the report, but, um, uh, energy storage facilities, um, basically, my understanding is a series of more or less shipping containers filled with batteries, um, seems to be a, an up and coming, uh, use, sometimes associated with data center usage, um, that, you know, kind of levels the demand of those. Um, but there are some, uh, hazards associated with those, you know, in particular for fire. And, and, um, you know, we have had somebody express interest in that, in the industrial district. Um, you know, we had a pre-submittal meeting with a, a developer and they, they're, they're looking a bit down the road still, but, um, you know, they've proposed a, a series of buildings and, and, you know, parking and potential data center usage for one or two of the buildings and this energy storage facility, which, um, initially I anticipated would be a building and thus subject to, you know, all the building code, electrical code, fire safety code and so on. Um, but if it's not a structure, then, and again, I think there is gonna be some state, uh, preemption on, you know, energy storage as well. Um, but I think we want to try to get a little bit ahead of that with our code also. And, um, so that, you know, when we do get a plan thrown on the table in front of us, we know how to respond to it. So, a couple of things, you know, I mean, if you had asked me about energy storage, you know, facilities a month ago, I would have absolutely no idea. Um, you know, I would, I would picture like a big battery, but I would picture a building. I wouldn't picture like a, you know, a piece of apparatus that's just sitting out, you know, on a paved surface.
I, I think that that technology really is only about six or eight months old. I don't think that that, that kind of storage technology at that, at that level for that much power.
Because they're looking to make it as efficient as possible, so again, it's kind of, it's developing.
It's a developing industry that's probably, and, and we're not alone in it being, in it outpacing our ability to keep up with it.
Our code and everything like that.
Yeah, so a lot of, uh, a lot of question marks with regard to the industrial district right now. And, um, you know, just from the conversation this evening, you know, a thought on the solar, you know, if it's, if it is at least initially going to be an accessory use to a manufacturer, eh, you know, a way to limit that might be to, you know, you, you permit, uh, solar generation, uh, e- less than or equal to the projected demands of the, you know, industry on the site. So, you know, it allows, you know, somebody who's interested to develop however much solar they need to, you know, offset their, their demand, but not to be a, uh, like a community solar facility that develops more energy than is used on site and sends it to the grid. So, just, just different things that we could think, you know, consider as far as like how we want to, um, how and if we want to limit that, that type of development. So, and again, I, I think, um, you know, the, I understand the state's goals for renewable energy. But, you know, those goals are going to require a lot of acreage to be used for that purpose. So, uh, I don't know if that's, again, the best and highest use for a limited commodity here in Tonty Town in Carroll County.
As I say, as, as possibly the most libertarian person on council and in planning and zoning.
Well, you're basically an analyst, come on, man.
I am not. There is an argument for zoning and it's, it's to direct the, 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 the growth in a way that will be beneficial to everybody. So, that's, that's where, like, yeah, you have to, you have to kind of lay this stuff out, like, like he's been saying. So, even I say, yeah, we need to do the zoning stuff to make it, uh, to make it work.
I'm not saying abolish zoning, I'm, I'm, I'm just wondering, like, I don't know, I don't know enough about zoning to, to like really comment intelligently. I'm, I'm trying to game this out in my head mostly, because like, I didn't start thinking about zoning until a month ago either, so.
And that's why I think, again, that I'm still on the, you tie it to the developed property. Because if you're tying it to the energy used at the facility, you're not creating an incentive to expand out your facility. Your only return is basically just your electric, your electric bill essentially. Um, and none of that, I think that's gonna be convoluted to even try to manage and keep track of as compared to tying it to developed property. Adding those solar, even just adding the solar farm itself is gonna raise how much electricity you use in that general area. I think, again, I, I think that creates a convoluted tasking of how to actually manage that as compared to tying to developed property. And the enforcement behind that could become a tangled kind of nightmare.
And, yeah, if, if my current limited, limited understanding is correct, we may want to, you know, just acknowledge what the state is requiring of us as far as what, what we need to allow in any zone. Um, and then we go ahead and we put that in the restricted industrial district as, you know, whatever the state, whatever the renewable energy, um, uh, legislation, you know, warranted, you know, solar facilities up to X megawatts, you know, are permitted use on this many acres or whatever it may be. Um, you know, and then we put in there our, our buffer requirements. So at least we have some guidance, you know, on, on that kind of site development. And then as an accessory use, we tie it to the, you know, the energy demand or the square footage or something of the existing facility on the site.
Yeah, I think that there's gonna be a lot more hashing out that goes on before it comes anywhere close to something that, that we're gonna have to look at up here.
So-
I agree, the base should be basically the base of what the state has set, the state's standards. And then you hash out what those further details look like.
Yeah.
Um, any additional further questions, comments before we proceed?
I'd like another ten minutes of Lil' Quayon, no, I'm good.
Jim, uh, continue on.
So, so just, uh, kinda, I'll try to pick up the pace here a little bit. Uh, so, Robert's Mill Road, the DeLauder bankruptcy. Um, so a bank has bought the debt, DeLauder's debt, and they want money from us. And, um, and we're working with the law firm that represents the bond company and we want money from them. Uh, we have been sitting on twenty-some thousand dollars of, uh, retainage for the project still. So, the bank that bought the debt wants that. The, you know, special counsel has corresponded back with them, haven't heard back from them yet, has sent more correspondence to the bond company's attorney, haven't heard back from them. So, at some point, you know, we may need to just, so to speak, cut our losses and-
No, the repairs on those roads are significant.
And, and make, and make the repairs. Um, but, uh, you know, we'll, we'll keep plugging away, but-
Twenty-six thousand dollars is not enough to overlay that road, so.
It's maybe a third of what was initially estimated. Um, so, and, uh, we are-
Is this just an overlay or is this a total re, like, total rebuild?
It's a, it's a mill and overlay. It's, the issue is that the, the top coat, um, did, isn't adhering and it's, it's ravelling, I think, is the term.
Yes.
Um, at, at the edges wherever they, um, wherever they, yeah, stopped one, I guess, load or application and put a new dump truck, dump truck load in, the, the seams are not sticking together and it's starting to-
Fairground's one of the roads, right?
And Fairground has a different issue, but yes.
Yeah, oh, there's this-
Fairground has a settling issue, um, not so much the, yeah, different issue, but still DeLauder.
Robert's Mill, look, it's sitting, again, it's sitting and looks better than Fairground, but Fairground is, that road is horrible. Take a trip down there sometime, it's, uh, the, that is a horrible job.
Again, that's, that's an issue of settlement over the pipe trenches, not an issue of the, the material ravelling issue has, had to do more with, um, with temperature and hand, the amount of handwork around the manholes, because there's manhole covers all the way up and down that, uh, stretch of Robert's Mill. And so every time you get to a manhole cover, you have a bunch of handwork to do. And when it's cold, that material doesn't hammer back in, um, and, and mesh in as well. Uh, and they just didn't do a good job of that. So that material is ravelling where the joints, where you've got, you know, down the center of the road, where the, this lane meets up with this lane, uh, it's ravelling out of the joints there because they didn't, uh, do the joints correctly. So there's, there are issues.
Are these like long roads that need?
Well, Robert's Mill, it's, it's a pretty significant stretch.
Quarter of a, almost quarter of a mile, isn't it, the Robert's Mill?
We're looking at like a one and a half million dollar, two million dollar project?
Uh, no, shouldn't be, shouldn't be.
Uh, the mill and overlay is maybe a hundred thousand.
I, I think that, well-
Still expensive for something we've bargained for.
It's still a lot more than the twenty-six thousand dollars we have.
It's expensive, that's what we already paid for.
I just wasn't sure if it was comparable to some of the things I was asking about in the capital improvement plan, or if it was like much less, is what I'm trying to figure out in my head.
So this would be mill and overlay and, um, fortunately, you know, if we do end up having to foot more of the bill than we want, um, you know, fortunately, the road is relatively narrow. So, you know, there is a, uh-
There we're now.
A bit of savings compared to doing, you know, a thirty-six foot wide, uh, you know, a thirty-eight foot wide street, so. So, uh, the, the, the war of letters, uh, continues on that. Uh, so water, the Riffles Lane storm drain, um, construction is, is, is complete. Uh, the concrete work's been done. Uh, the contractor opted to basically do all of the re-contouring of Riffles. It was close enough to the driveway apron portions of the project that they just did the entire piece in concrete. So it does look a little bit odd that the driveway, it appears that the driveway aprons stick out into the street. Um, but it should be, you know, longer lasting and, uh, the water is going where it needs to go. Uh, so, success there. Uh, we do have some, some cleanup and, and, uh, some of the property owners have expressed concern where a piece of equipment was driven outside of the, you know, the disturbed, limit of disturbance. And, so we're gonna have some little cleanup stuff to do still, but, uh, overall, the project is, you know, I would say substantially complete.
I had one coming on that, ten AM tomorrow?
Right.
Ten AM to meet out there tomorrow?
Yeah, so we're, we're hoping to, uh, yeah, hear back from the property owner as to when, when they can meet us on site. So rather than just, you know, talking about it and then they go out and look at it and then we do something and then they go look at it again and it maybe isn't what they expected.
If we just go out there and-
We're just gonna go out and meet them on site with Public Works and try to hammer out a, a final, you know, solution to the last couple of things that they're looking for. So, um, so hopefully that'll be a wrap very soon. Um, of course, if we don't get some rain-
I was gonna say that they-
The rest seed's not gonna take and it's gonna be forever before we can close our grading permit.
Chop me back ten AM, the property owners, for out there. Ten AM is what they send.
Ten AM?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, okay.
Just to give you a heads up on that.
Okay, and, yeah, it's very possible I have an email from him or a voicemail that I haven't listened to yet. Okay. Westview Drive, the contractor's been back out to, um, do some, uh, filling in where there was like pavement drop-off at the edge of the road and, um, you know, some, added some topsoil and seed and stuff around there, so, uh, that's looking good. We just need to wait for that to kind of come into, uh, for it to take root and, and be, uh, established vegetation before we consider it closed out. Last one on the list, uh, the sewer manhole rehabilitation. Um, since, since I did the report, uh, the mayor has signed the contract. So, uh, we, I hopefully, hopefully by Monday, I will have an estimated start date to share with you. So a couple of other things, um, so I had sent an email about some water leaks. Uh, we've, this, this month has been awful for water leaks for us. The, I guess, the, the most recent substantial one was, uh, a transite line that's between Courier Drive and Trevanian Road, uh, in the stretch between Grand and Kings. Uh, this line runs in basically between backyards of houses that front Courier and that front Trevanian. So we would like to abandon this line and the homes that are served by it are the ones that front Trevanian Road. Uh, there is a water line in Trevanian Road that could be tapped into to serve those properties and then we could abandon the old transite line that's back in a grassy easement area. This is the same line that we had tried to fix a couple of weeks ago, uh, but the leak was right at the transition, so we couldn't repair the leak under pressure and we couldn't, um, we started shutting down more and more valves. You know, you, you start as close to the leak as you can and work your way out until the flow stops. And, you know, we, we occasion, we, it's not unusual for us to turn a valve and it won't completely cut off the flow. So then we go out and try the next one in the line. And sometimes we have to turn off a much larger portion of the city than you would expect to repair a, the line. Um, so for this one, we had a contractor come in and do two insert of valves at either end of the line, um, towards King's Drive and then towards Grand Drive so that we could isolate it and make the repair. The plan was to repair it Tuesday, uh, but the leak that has been ongoing and our leak detection didn't pick it up because of the transite line. Um, apparently it doesn't make the same noises or vibrations that the equipment picks up as a ductile iron line does. Um, so we suspected there was something going on, but the leak detection, um, the monitors weren't telling us that there was a leak. Um, and yet we had this area by, uh, you know, a tree that had been cut down where the roots had gotten in and apparently, um, eventually caused a leak. So we, we had this swampy area, but the leak detectors were not indicating that there was flow. Um, so eventually we went in there and dug it up and yes, there was a leak. Um, so, so the valves were installed. We thought we could repair it Tuesday, but then over the weekend, it, it cut loose and started the flow a lot faster than it had been. Um, so it was affecting the overall city water pressure. The wells couldn't keep up, um, the wells were pumping constantly and still couldn't maintain system pressure. So we had to come in and do it, you know, on the, uh, on the weekend. Um, so that one has been completed. We do have a seeping valve on Robert's Mill Road that some residents have commented about. Um, that was actually, that started seeping when we tried to turn that one off from another water leak, um, elsewhere in the city. And, uh, so that has been given a Band-Aid sort of repair right now, uh, but it really does need to be replaced. So, um, that's gonna be scheduled. But, uh, for the immediate future, you know, we backfilled it, we, we tightened it up the best we could, slowed the leak to a reasonable amount that we can schedule the replacement, um, when we have a little bit more time, so.
Is that, that's, that's not within the bounds of the DeLauder contract, right? This is in a different-
No, that's, that's, um, that's close to Riffles Lane. It's, uh, very close to Riffles and Robert's Mill.
And again, I just wanted Jim to give an update on that, because I know a couple emails were sent out over the weekend and again, it's been kind of an ongoing thing, so.
So, yeah, so after the, after the one between Courier and Trevanian was repaired, uh, our well, our pumping, pumping hours are pretty much back to normal. Um, system pressure, uh, is, is pretty much back to normal, but we still think we have a leak somewhere that, that's bigger than, you know, at Robert's Mill. Um, but, uh, along those notes, um, Well Fifteen, which is one of our wells at Carroll Vista and, and typically one of our really good producers, um, when that is pumping, the water level is dropping to about fifteen feet above the pump level while it's pumping, which is much lower than typical. And we have had, um, you know, very little rain, uh, for the past month or so. So I will just encourage and ask all of you to encourage people to try to, uh, be conservation-minded with water usage and really just do what is, I, I don't like to use the term common sense too much, but because that means something different to different people. Uh, but, you know, as someone who grew up using well water, uh, in the summertime, when it's been dry, you don't do things like wash your car every week, you don't water your lawn, things of that nature. So if we can encourage everybody to be a little more conservation-minded, um, you know, during their trips around the city, Public Works has noted a lot of lawn watering and things like that. So, you know, when we don't have rain, it just is a- So, you know, when we don't have rain, it just is a better idea for us to conserve water in general. And for those who have been around a really long time, you may recall that there was actually a joint resolution between the county commissioners and all eight municipalities some years ago that encouraged water conservation measures every summer, just as an ongoing habit. I'm sure folks have forgotten about that and I'm sure a lot of folks didn't even live here when, when that was done. But, but again, you know, we are, we haven't seen a lot of rain lately, so if folks can just, you know, try to be conservation-minded on their water usage, hopefully we'll see a little bit of a decrease in our pumping numbers and we won't need to enact any, anything beyond the voluntary restrictions that we have in place now. Going through my list here. Okay. So today was water shut-off day, while I'm talking about water. We started out, started out with a hundred and thirty accounts that were going to be on the shut-off list and then miraculously, that night, a lot of people used the Dropbox or made their payments. So that list went down to about eighty in, in the morning. And of that, we have thirty-two accounts that are, are currently shut-off. So it's, it's always surprising to see how many people pay, you know, the night before shut-off or the morning of shut-off. So it's just always interesting to watch those numbers, how they fluctuate at the very last minute. So let's see, and I'm going to close out on a couple pieces of good news. We were awarded twenty-five thousand dollars of Main Street Improvement Funds. This year, we did say that we were just going to apply that to help offset the Main Street manager salary. So it will be a very quick matter of accounting and reporting and then we can not have a lot of municipal things to track and, and everything. So that was actually, the Department of Housing and Community Development's recommendation to us was, keep it simple, just put in for salary and, you know, then you just have one thing to report on. So we did that and we did get the award, so.
And for future reference.
Not a, not a real competitive.
We're not, we're not going to see that for two years.
Sorry?
We're not going to see that for two years going forward, correct? Just so everybody's aware.
Right, so, right, so as, as an aspiring Main Street going forward, right, we're not going to see the same level of funding.
This is the last time we see it for two years.
So, yep.
All, all that means is, is that we just don't have that extra twenty-five thousand dollars though, right?
Yeah, going to the.
Yeah, so it just comes from us as opposed to the state.
And we will still be eligible for community legacy funds and things like that that we, that we apply for.
We still have the SAG, the trade and all that stuff.
Right, right. Yep, so just the Main Street Improvement Funds will not be available to us. And lastly, some more good news on the waterfront. We did receive our second installment of the three M settlement for the PFAS class action suit. So that ended up providing two-hundred-and-forty-one-thousand-nine-fifty-seven-seventy-four. So again, you know, some additional revenue coming in that wasn't in the budget since we don't budget for settlement monies. So, and again, that's just the next installment from three M. There are other chemical manufacturers involved in the, in the suit. So three M is the, one of the bigger ones though, so their settlement amount is higher than some of the smaller players. So, yeah, so it's always nice to see that, that, hear from the Baron and Bud, the council that's, that's spearheading the class action suit when, you know, there's a lot of stuff we need to keep plugging into the portal for the suit. But it's always nice to hear from them that, you know, this settlement payment is released and, you know, so kind of the fruits of the labor. So, let's see. Yeah, I think that was everything on my list. Thanks for bearing with me.
Do you have anything, or additional comments, questions, concerns to the city manager for city manager report before I ask them about?
I just.
Do you have anything for departments, Jim, before I, I know you kind of already touched on most of the stuff, so.
Yeah.
Questions from council?
Yeah, I just have a quick question. The flow discharge chart that was in this, this month's package, this is the first time I've seen this. And so the, 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 the straight green line is what MDE allows us to discharge?
I'm still scrolling for it, give me a second, please.
It's okay.
Sorry, which, where's?
This is, uh.
The DPW section?
Yeah, in the DPW report. The water and sewer graphs.
The last graph, millions of gallons discharged on the Y-axis?
Yes, right. So this is the, the last graph in the group and this is, like I said, this is the first time.
Yeah, the teal is where we're at.
The teal, right, the teal is.
The light green is the limit essentially.
Okay, and so we're actually much closer to our discharge limit than.
And that's where you can see the dotted line is where you hit that eighty percent threshold.
Right, is our eighty percent, which is what you want to shoot for. But I guess it's, that begs the question, is, is our amount of discharge becoming as much of a limiting factor to development as our water recharge?
I would say that's always been a decent factor. Because again, we, we were hitting those thresholds before we even did some of these projects. But one thing I will say is, you know, you're looking at some of the months where it's going up, May, June, July, we did, we were getting some pretty good rain those months.
Yeah, oh yeah, I'm, 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 I'm not questioning why we, why, why it is that. I'm just, I, I hadn't realized that we were, we were on a slope that was that close to what our permit limits are.
I think you're going to, again, I think you're going to want to see where, if it corrects out for August, September, October, you know, if, if we're in November and it's definitely nearing up there, but I think you're already seeing it kind of correcting the back end.
Oh yeah, I mean, I, I had no question about that. I get, I guess, my, my point was, is not that, about the, the intermediate fluctuations, it's just that the, the slope of the line in general is a lot closer together than I expected them to be. I thought we had more headspace in terms of our discharge. I know, I know the plant has more capacity than we're allowed to discharge. And so we're not, you know, right, at some point, that's as, as limiting a factor as water.
And I think that's why you saw, again, some of the INI projects contributed to kind of.
Oh yeah, that's, yeah, I mean, right, that's huge for what we've done.
I think we were even talking about that back when we were talking about the Roberts Mill projects and the INI reduction is really, again, that's all stuff that really has to happen if you're going to have more development because we are hard limited in what we can't discharge out. But again, as far as where we sit right now, I think you're going to look at a correction over August, September, really just, again, depends on the rain that we get.
Right, I'm not saying that this won't, that it won't improve back down to below the eighty percent line. What I'm, what I'm pushing at is what, is where that solid line is and that is a much lower slope than I thought we had.
Yeah, and this is, again, this is, you know, trying to project our, our floating cap, which is based on the flows that go through the plant. So we have, you know, we have an ultimate annual number of pounds of nitrogen and phosphorus that, you know, that can be permitted and then we have like the daily flow capacity. So oftentimes, when we talk about available capacity, we're talking primarily about the treatment plant, plants, one-point-one-million-gallon-per-day flow capacity versus the average of the past three years of flows. So we are at, you know, our three-year average has been at eighty percent, which means that we need to update our capacity management report and submit that to the state. But with our INI projects, you know, certainly we've seen the, the flows going down, but, you know, when we have a, a wet year or we, you know, have something, I mean, we certainly are trending down and, you know, those numbers look much better than they used to, but we're still experiencing a lot of INI, so the weather really is a big driver still. You know, the, the ongoing manhole replacement project, you know, those, you know, those, a lot of those manholes are right along the water course and, and, you know, even, I think, within the floodplain. So I know that Public Works has popped some of those manhole lids during dry weather and seen like a lot of water just rushing in between the bricks and cracks in the concrete. And so we know that we're experiencing significant inflow, you know, with those manholes. So again, hopefully this project will tighten up that, you know, reduce that INI number even more. But, but yeah, when we talk about development capacity, that, that's like the first thing that we're really looking at is, you know, we've got one-point-one-million gallons we can flow, we've averaged, you know, eight-hundred thousand, so the difference is.
Right.
Now, of course, we don't want to allocate a hundred percent of our capacity because then every time it, I mean, we're never going to completely eliminate influence infiltration. So, you know, if we, if we max out to that degree, we're going to be, we're, we're never going to make permit.
Right. Well, I guess, I guess so that, what that, what that brings to my mind is then the question of growth. You know, we're, you're looking at, you know, sizable number of houses and a couple of developments that are kind of currently on the drawing board. There's a few others that are kind of out there and not gotten to the drawing, you know, they're on their drawing board, but they haven't made it to our drawing board yet. You know, there's a lot of, you know, we don't have capacity to service all of those developments if all of those developers come to us.
And that's what, again, that's what a lot of the big conversation was for, like the sewers annexation, for instance, was capacity. I mean, that was the big argument everybody was making against the annexation was, realistically, if you looked at it, eventually we're going to hit that capacity. And again, we have wiggle room now, but eventually we are, we're going to be hitting the upper limits.
Well, I'm, yeah, I'm just saying, even with, with, with metal, with Mountain Brook, you know, we're, that may put us right up against it in one shot.
Right. So, you know, we are talking about some pretty sizable numbers, you know, for the flows at the plant. And, and again, you know, we need to continue to pursue that INI reduction and, you know, with, with the manhole rehab, hopefully we'll see another reduction. If we are able to move forward with George and Middle Street, you know, hopefully that'll be another substantial hit to INI. But just to, for a little bit of perspective, say compared to a, you know, a development project, so, you know, at two-hundred-and-fifty gallons per dwelling per day, four-hundred homes is a hundred thousand gallons. So we've, we've seen, you know, tens of thousand of gallons reduction in flows, you know, with, with each of these projects. So I think that, you know, the INI reduction can yield a relatively large number of potential EDUs of water. But even, even if we really get the system nice and tight, to the point that, you know, we get down to, you know, sixty-five or seventy percent of our flow capacity, ultimately, you know, the nutrient level is going to be the factor.
Right, then that, that may become the driver.
But I think then it becomes a, a matter more of economics of, you know, the, the return on investment for improved technology. You know, we used to use the phrase of, you know, we used to say we're at the limits of technology with how clean we can get the wastewater. But, you know, we have seen with, for example, Westminster's Pure Water Project where they are doing indirect potable reuse of their wastewater, the water that comes out of that filtration plant, at least from the, the pilot, you know, was actually cleaner than the water in their reservoir. So, you know, they would take this clean water and because the state won't let you do direct reuse, they would take this, you know, super clean water, put it in the reservoir where it gets dirty again and then have to clean it again to pump it into the system. So the technology, you know, to really remove a tremendous amount of the nutrients is, is there, but it's expensive. So will growth pressure on Tonny Town rise to the level that it will accept the additional cost of that kind of treatment? You know, if you, if you can treat wastewater to the point that you can drink it, you certainly should be able to treat it to the point that you can discharge it and have it be, you know, a much lower nutrient level. So if, if you can treat it so there's less nutrients in every gallon of effluent, it would stand to reason, I would think, that you could discharge more gallons.
Yeah.
I mean, that, that's how it works in my mind, but that is expensive. And will, you know, will development pressure on Carroll County and Tonny Town be, you know, be such that the economics for a developer, you know, if we choose to move forward with that kind of technology? You know, and again, that, that potentially could assist with the recharge piece as well. But then, you know, direct reuse is not permitted by the state yet. It may never be, who knows? You know, there, there are other states where they do deep well injection of treated wastewater, you know, to replenish, replenish the aquifers. So, you know, that may be an option in our future, but again, none of these things are cheap. So if we choose, if we make a choice that we want to be able to continue to grow and not be water and wastewater constrained, we will also need to make some decisions about whether, you know, how do we invest to develop that capacity? And we also will need to do some analysis of, you know, will the market pay, you know, the increased fees we will have to charge per house to be able to do that? So I don't, you know, I don't know at what point the economies of development, you know, will pay.
Right, at some point, the impact fees will have to become high enough to pay for this.
Right, right, so the.
Not just impact fees, but, I mean.
And, right, and.
Right, you've got to build out the system.
Right.
The, the impact fees only, only, only help in the beginning.
And you're going to tack it onto a water bill similar to Meads essentially.
Yeah, so, right, so the impact fees would pay for developing the capacity, but then there are going to be additional costs.
Operating, the operations of the additional capacity.
Impact fees are great in the beginning, but twenty, you know, ten, fifteen, twenty years, like, those impact fees are gone.
Absolutely, yeah. I mean, the, the cost to operate that is going to add, you know, there's, there's additional power, there's, you know, the, the membranes, you know, need to be replaced and, you know, I mean, there's a lot of expense beyond just building it, right? The operating expenses will go up and that really should translate into the rates that we charge. So the argument of, you know, we know people are very sensitive on, on water and sewer rates and, you know, if, if a rate change is really tied to development, that's going to be a much different conversation than, you know, just our ongoing operational costs.
That's why I think you've had the discussion regarding the housing developments and whatnot. And again, the pushback again, going back to the sewers annexation.
Right.
And that is why people were looking at that because realistically, in the long term, it is going to cost the people here money.
And, yeah, and I think that for the projects that are in the pipeline today, I believe, you know, with the, with the acquisition of some additional recharge and our recent change to the ordinance that requires developers to bring that recharge, you know, for their project, I think that for what's in the pipeline right now, looking at our dry weather flows against our plant, treatment plant capacity, my hope is that we will recover enough capacity to, you know, absorb that, that additional demand through INI reduction and not be looking for a wastewater permit increase. We definitely need to pursue water allocation permit increases to be able to provide the water for it. But my hope is that, you know, we'll see enough reduction through the INI projects that on the wastewater side, we'll be able to accommodate, you know, four-hundred-ish homes at, at Mountain Brook if that ever does come to fruition. You know, Garnet Ridge is only fifty units and Hoffman Property in the very early stages, you know, but that's, I think, under, under two-hundred.
It's the future development of the rest of that property, it's Sewers Farm.
Right, but then, right, but then, right.
Any future development in the growth area.
Yes.
You know, so if we, if we, we have to be looking out twenty, thirty years out and where are we headed in that twenty or thirty years?
Right. So I think it's, it's the growth area that's, you know, that's really more concerning as far as, you know, some of those economic factors.
Right, and maybe we can handle the, what's currently in the pipeline, but it's the things that are coming on their way to the pipeline that we may not be, have the capacity for.
Right, you know, and of the projects I mentioned, only, only two of them are officially, you know, in, in the planning process. Others, you know, we've had pre-submitting meetings, we've done some traffic studies, but they have yet to come before the planning commission. So I don't know if we would even say that they're really in the pipeline just yet.
And again, I'm not going to rehash this because I know we had it during, back during the water rates when we were going back and forth on it. But that's kind of my concern is essentially these INI projects, they, they're not really for the, the people who are here who've actually paid into all of this by paying their water bills and whatnot. This is projects that are going to free up for other developments to come in. This is projects that are going to free up for other developments to come in. And that's what I don't necessarily sit comfortable with.
Well, we also...
But not entirely. It does... So, I mean, if you have the lower INI, then, I mean, that's better for...
Well, if you have the lower INI, should we be reducing the rates on the people who are getting the water because they've now paid to reduce that INI through their water bills that have built that up?
Really, the INI projects really are maintenance.
That's system maintenance and preservation.
And that's what I'm saying.
We are recovering lost capacity, but these are projects that should be done, you know, if you have a leaky pipe, you should fix it.
And this is where the problem comes.
And the rates should pay to fix that leaky pipe.
Yeah. And it's kind of like the annexation for Sewers, for instance. We didn't have to annex that, but now that we've annexed it, the developer does have a right to basically piggyback on the INI that we have reduced that the residents here basically paid for. But it's, we're going to go right back up to where we were, and that's my argument behind it all. It isn't necessarily that the INI doesn't help the residents here. Yes, it decreases, it decreases our flows and everything like that, but they're not seeing the reduction because we're not reducing the water rates because now the new development... Sewers, for instance, when they develop, they're just going to use the INI that we just freed up from the projects that we spent the money on. Again, if you're spending money on those projects that the residents have paid into the utility fund and whatnot, would you not then reduce the rates that they're paying because you've now reduced the INI, you've now reduced the capacity, everything that you're putting out? But no, you can't because now the developers are developing based on what you freed up.
Yeah, but all of those new homes are rate payers, and they're paying rate back in to the system also. So, I'm not sure where your argument goes there.
They are, but we're also aware that those, like, for instance, Meads is going to end up costing more than we made out of the impact fees. We know in the long term that, again, these developments are going to cost more than we get from the impact fees. And that's where all this leads is, again, even... So, again, let's say we do get capacity limited, we get a portion of the bypass, we then have to maintain that road because we have not completed a bypass, we have not built it to state specifications. That's money. That's residents' money here that they're going to have to pay for that. And that's kind of the trouble that I've always had with the Sewers Annexation is we went and annexed a piece of property that we didn't have to annex, and now that developer can tie into our systems to use that capacity that we have freed up with the residents' money here, when that could have gone to decreases in their water bills, which we already know that people are struggling with their water bills. That is evident. And again, that's just, it's a big circle, but that's kind of what boggles my mind is, again, we annex something that our residents are now going to have to pay for with the projects that we used to free up that INI. And again, we can keep doing these projects, we can keep freeing up the INI, but all those things that we do are just being eaten up by the further development. And so, the people who are paying into that aren't actually seeing the decreases or the benefits from it.
But I think your argument ignores the additional rate payers and the additional revenue in the system from the additional payers.
Well, the problem with that is that for every, again, for every thousand residents, two officers, a DPW worker, additional staff, bigger buildings, this isn't...
I think we're talking about something in my mind different than the water stuff.
Yeah, he's talking about houses.
I totally see what you're saying with, you know, the streets and all that stuff. Like, we had a conversation about this like a week ago, I think. I am having trouble following your INI argument, though. I'm kind of where Tillman is on that, like, the INI reductions are good for them, too.
Again, Tillman's argument is essentially the houses get built, so we now have more taxpayers. That doesn't help the people here who have now spent that, who have now put into that utility fund that we're using to build that INI so these developments can build, where we've actually reduced the sign... We've, again, we've reduced the INI, right? So, naturally, if we're paying less to do all of this, you'd decrease the water rates. But we can't because now the new development has come in and has used what we've freed up. So, and it continuously tracks in that cycle.
But I think he's right, though. Then you do have new rate payers. So, like, you use the cash coming in from those rate payers and, like, you use the impact fees to improve, make improvements. But then, like, once that development happens, now they're rate payers. So, like, the money that they're giving you now goes to make the system better and...
And now you've trapped yourself.
Once you see what the cash flows on that are, like, there may be a case to then reduce rates if it's there.
You've trapped yourself in the cycle that most cities then trap themselves in is you have to keep developing to have money, and there's a point where you can't develop to have money. And that is the crux of all this, is eventually, we cannot develop, and the tax rate on the people here is going to have to get raised because we developed all these houses and they can't pay for themselves.
Well, so, again, like, that part, I agree with you on, I mean, you're talking about the growth Ponzi scheme, basically. But I'm just, I'm specifically talking about water stuff.
But if you cover water on that, if, for example, if Meads water bills, not my Meads, those Meads water bills...
Harry's paying everybody's.
Don't cover the extra... All of the extra work that has to happen to keep that all going over and above what we got in impact fees, now we're going to have more developments that might have the same issue where after the impact fees run out, now we're running a net negative. So, at some point, we run out of impact fees to keep ourselves afloat.
I agree with that. I said that earlier, too, yeah.
But that's where the INI comes in, like, you're subsidizing future development by the residents here paying for the infrastructure to reduce the INI that now frees up for developers to use that INI. So, even though you get the impact...
I don't know that I necessarily see it as subsidizing future development, though. Like, yes, that can go to help benefit future development, but, I mean, in general, reducing INI is good for the system, period.
Yes.
It is if you're not adding on to the system. Even though you're reducing INI, again, if you're just reducing INI, right, you have no developments going in. In theory, you have reduced your costs for the discharge, you've reduced all of that. That would normally translate into a reduction for water payers. But instead of a reduction for water payers, because, again, you fixed the infrastructure, you reduced the INI, instead of getting that reduction for the water payers currently who have paid for all of this, you now have developers who are using that INI that you freed up to do their developments. It goes back to the crux of, hey, they need the capacity, and we're using our residents' money to free up that capacity, but our residents aren't getting the benefit of that.
But...
What do the people here get out of that?
Well, but at some point, are you just zero growth? And you, you know...
Well, even if you're zero growth, like, you would still want to have as low of INI as possible because, like, then it frees up the cash that you'd otherwise be losing on the lost water, right? And like, that cash then gets freed up to go back into the system to continue to do more maintenance projects, replace, like, you know, that old translight pipe that needs to die. Just in general, so like, even if we say no more growth, period, like, we still want to reduce INI because, like, we have significant infrastructure costs in our water lines. So, like...
But that's the issue, though, is if you didn't have that growth, those projects would then reduce the cost that residents have to pay for their water in theory because you have now reduced, again, what you're discharging, you've now reduced the overall costs. There's no... But there's no benefit now because, again...
It wouldn't necessarily reduce it in theory, though, because that's only if you're not accruing for maintenance costs over time.
Right. That's the point I was just getting ready to raise. The problem is that then you have all this aging infrastructure.
Again, like, zero growth. If I know a set of pipes is going to cost me a million dollars in 20 years, like, financially, I really should be accruing for those costs over the course of that 20 years and that my cash that I'm receiving, like, in my base rates should be taking all, taking those future costs into consideration because at some point, I'm going to have to pay for those.
And that's the problem. Because now, again, you've reduced the INI, you've replaced the pipes that are here, you've done the work for the residents who are here, but you've now taken on a new development. And while you're going to get those impact fees initially, you're eventually going to have to, you're going to have to do that infrastructure again. There is no point at which you're not going to have to raise water rates to now subsidize that new development because the money that you spent to repair the pipes that you already have is now being used by that new development for capacity. And again, it's a cycle. Next, you're going to have to, now, we have all these other ones, so now we've got to build another development because we need impact fees to pay for those.
Jim, are there computer models out there for city managers to use and model how to budget these sorts of things? I have to imagine that there are. I mean, you know...
There definitely are. I don't know if they're for them, but like, there's financial models that do exactly this.
And certainly, I'm aware of some providers who specialize in this sort of thing as well, but I'm not familiar with any particular software that...
And, you know, I wonder, and this sounds like this is a whole separate workshop.
Yeah, well, that's the water...
And I know you've been talking about doing that.
I think you and I agree just on most of the things. I think we're just getting in the weeds of basically financial modeling in general. Like, I don't think we really disagree that much, is what I'm saying.
Yeah. Right.
Like, even, again, even assuming zero growth, like, I see what you're saying, and I don't want to be in the growth run.
There is no zero growth model anymore because, again, we do have capacity for developers to build, and we have annexed land for them to build. What we have to be cautious about in the future is annexing further land for developers to build if we already know we're having capacity issues. I still argue Sewers shouldn't have been annexed because we are not at a point where we can reduce resident water rates. Instead, you know, again, the idea is in the future, they might have to be increased to, again, in our pipes and everything like that. We shouldn't be annexing additional land that now gives developers a right to build. And there's only so much control you get over that because, again, you're going to get, you're going to start getting preempted. You're going to, there's developer rights, they bought that property, and it is annexed and zoned for proper use. And that is why, and again, this is one other argument, but it's why you have to be cautious when you're annexing property. You can't just be out of control because that control doesn't mean much because you're not really in the driver's seat, even when you get that annexed land. And if developers want to develop an annexed land, they'll take it to court over it. But, yeah, again, I just, my thing is, I see we did a lot of INI projects, we spent a lot of money on pipes, everything like that. And again, yes, we were able to do a 5% decrease, but realistically, that wasn't mapped out for a 5% decrease. We did all these projects, we reduced INI, we increased the capacity that we can have, and the idea was not to have a decrease. The idea was just to, again, developers were going to come build and that freed up capacity and whatnot for that. But we have to be mindful of all these projects that we're using this money for that's going into these funds, even though we're freeing up that INI, if there's no net benefit for the residents, I don't get what we're doing other than giving developers capacity to build. And again, if we don't have capacity to build, then they can't build. But...
And town, that's how towns die, so...
That's right.
Well, it depends because overbuilding is also...
Just in general, again, like, in my mind, you reduce INI, even assuming no growth, and you use that additional cash, basically, that you'd effectively be losing to fix the current system. I mean, that's, like, again, we have an insane amount of issues that need to be fixed.
You've now fixed the current issue, but you've now freed up capacity to assume a whole nother issue, which is the new developments that are coming down.
So, yeah, I find this to be a fascinating conversation, and this is why I really like the planning aspect of things, you know, but I think it's an important conversation to have and needs to, you know, carry over also to the Planning Commission because, as we are in the midst of our comprehensive plan update, you know, I firmly believe that the development that we see, you know, during the life of this upcoming comprehensive plan, you know, may be nearing the end of our ability to grow outward. So, the type of development that we see, while we do have capacity available and while we, you know, while there is demand on, you know, the region and the state, you know, for more growth, you know, what should that growth look like to put Tonny Town in the best fiscal situation that it can? And there are all kinds of opinions on that. But I think it's a generally pretty widely accepted notion that suburban-style, you know, large lot development does not pay for itself, you know, long term, that you have a lot of infrastructure maintenance for little revenue, you know, per linear foot. But then you also have things like, we talked about, police service, you know, so more residents equates to more police, you know, so it's, there's so many things to factor into it, you know. And while from an infrastructure standpoint, I can say, well, a higher density gives us more accessible base per linear foot of road and water and sewer infrastructure, there are also costs associated with recreation, with, you know, public safety, fire and EMS. You know, those, you know, that increased density and population also affects, you know, it's great for the infrastructure, but then other services, we're going to have to provide more of, you know, per square mile or per acre than we do at a lower density. So, you know, it's almost as though the infrastructure, the outlook for the infrastructure perspective is a different outlook than other city services. So, you know, it's a lot to think about, and I honestly don't know, you know, what the answer is.
Yeah. And that's why I was asking the question about the modeling because at some point, we need to model these things out 30 years and decide which way we want to go.
Yeah.
You know, I'm all for infill development and higher density towards the downtown kind of infill, and I prefer that over large lot subdivisions because it is much more cost-effective for the city in a variety of ways. But that doesn't mean that we can't have large lot development, some semblance of it. And that, of course, is the whole part of the theory behind the community village overlay about trying to condense, you know, the number of allowed units into a smaller space so that we do reduce those costs. You know, so I think we've taken some good looks at it, but we really need, I think, to really look at some long-term modeling and see what we need to do and what makes sense for us going forward, you know, as a... You know, we're the stewards right now of what Tonny Town would look like 30 years from now. And this is, that's why I'm kind of just sitting here because this is what happens with the comp plan every frigging month.
I've seen you over there like, ah.
They're an important discussion to have, and we've elaborated this one a whole lot.
Come to the comp plan and listen to Harry complain about water and growth areas. But, no, the, this is exactly some of the things that I brought up during the comp plan is because the water projections are fairly off at this point. Because if I'm riffing off the top of my head, but I believe we're already at our 2040 expected water capacity or water usage as a town. So, it's something that's getting discussed a lot. I'll just go with that.
I see.
For long hours.
Yeah. And that needs to be fixed because of the projections that are in the current draft of the comp plan just aren't making it, so...
Yeah.
Again, the only thing, my last closing thing on this is it just, the whole thing drives me nuts because we knew this when the annexation was presented for Sewers, and that was our chance to really take control, take the helm, and not put ourselves in a worse predicament. And for some reason, we still chose to do it. It'll be interesting to see where it goes. Okay. You got anything else, Jim? Mike, heading down to new business.
I will have mercy on you all now.
Thank you. Monthly financial report. Questions, comments, concerns by council? Hearing non-proceeding forward accounts payables. Questions, comments, concerns by council? Hearing non-proceeding forward approval of special event permit, National Capital Region, early Ford V8 Club Car Show, May 17th, 2026. Questions, comments, concerns by council?
I assume that's Memorial Park.
Next up, approval of special event permit, Tonny Town Pride, June 20th, 2026. Questions, comments, concerns by council? Hearing non-proceeding forward revisions to general specifications for street and stormwater management facilities construction. Jim, lead us off.
Okay. So, our manual is really kind of a supplement to the Carroll County Streets Manual. So, we've adopted their manual, but then we depart from it or we add to it and, you know, with certain things. So, that's really what the manual before you is, is kind of a supplement to the county's Streets Manual. I'm still scrolling, trying to get it in front of me.
Pages it?
Starts on page 79, so I've got nine more pages to scroll. So, some of the things that are changing are, we're trying to be consistent with the terminology for the different types of streets as far as collector roads, service drives, rallies, local roads, commercial industrial roads. And there are plates or, like, basically sample drawings for each of those different types of roads. We've done a lot of tidying up, of making sure the plates match the text that's in the plan where we've had some things where dimensions weren't clear on the plate drawing... Where we've, we've had some things where, uh, dimensions weren't clear on the plate drawings or they didn't depict things the same way that the text in the manual, uh, described. And, uh, let's see. We do talk about, um, you know, the various, uh, road markings and stop bars and crosswalks and, and things like that. That, you know, we, we tried to be cognizant of pedestrian safety. Um, you know, making sure that we have all the things in the manual that we're going to ask a developer to do when they build new, new streets. Um.
One of the things, um, when you're talking about the crosswalks, um, where there are, and I don't know if we can do some kind of analysis on the heavily traveled crosswalks. But I know we've talked about putting in the RRFB, the solar powered ones that we can put in, uh, at like Roberts Mill Park. I think there was a, a heavily used crosswalk down there we were talking about.
There's Roberts Mill, there's Keene over by the schools. It's probably going to be the first priority is the Keene's one.
Yeah. So I, what I'm, what I was driving at is do we want to, do we want to put that in the, in the manual? Um, to require those in what might, you know, what, what are anticipated to be heavy, heavily foot traffic crosswalks? Or where a, um, pedestrian trail, uh, would cross a, would cross a, like a local street or a, or a collector street, especially where we crawl, where, like where a trail would cross a collector would be a good place to have that kind of signalization.
We can certainly check and see if those are already incorporated into one of the other manuals that are adopted by reference. Um, and, and I guess.
Talk about the water that's, nevermind.
Careful, it might.
I'm sure it does.
The other, the other thing is, um, regarding pavement width. Um, and, and it was, is Roberts Mill considered a local or is that a collector? And, you know, did we build that to our own standards? Cause I don't, I, I don't think that road is 31 feet wide.
I think it's, I think it would be considered local.
Yeah. So, you know, is it 31 eight wide? I don't, that road seems awful narrow.
Yeah. Again, I, I don't know, I don't know if you're going to be able to consider that against our standard specifications because it was a road that already existed, right? Everything was already built in there.
Considerably.
We did.
Yes.
But I mean, that was part of adding the sidewalks and whatnot. But I don't think it was necessarily, again, this is going forward for the street specifications on further developments and stuff like that to make sure they make sense. Again, if we could go back to when Roberts Mill was originally created and the houses were being plopped down. You know, this is where this would have applied and would, it would have made sense and made, uh, more productive. But it's hard to apply this retroactively to some of our roads, for instance. Again, you want to be able to apply it to most of these over here.
Well, except that we just rebuilt Roberts Mill and, and narrowed it considerably. And that's, and I don't have any problem with having done that because that's obviously a traffic calming measure. So it was, that was done purposefully and the question is, do we, should we be adjusting this table accordingly?
Well, I think this is more about new construction.
You wouldn't adjust it based on the current.
I'm just raising the question.
Yeah. But, um, we, we certainly will take a look and see if the, um, RFB, RRFBs are already referenced in the other. So, so towards the beginning of this, it talks about the, um, uh, items covered by this document are outlined as in the latest edition of the Maryland Department of Transportation State Highway Administration Standards specifications for constructions and materials, and then also, uh, respective chapters of the Carroll County Design Manual. Um, so this is kind of, you know, clarification and a supplement to those. So we'll see if the beacons are already referenced in the other, um, manuals that are referenced here. So if they are, we don't need to include them, but we may want to include our own standards for them. So something, something we can certainly, you know, talk about. Right. So, um, so we will take a look at that. And, uh, yeah, one of, one of the plates in here is for speed tables so that we can direct a, you know, um, you know, whatever development is going through the pipeline, um, as part of their street plan. You know, we can incorporate speed tables hopefully to keep the speeds, um, moderate, uh, through the new developments. So, you know, fresh blacktop is always an invitation to go fast for a lot of people. Um, so, you know, so now we have a specification for a speed table and it's in the manual. So we can, you know, compel a developer to build that in with the, the new roads that come online. we've also updated, um, our stormwater, um, details used to be based on some outdated rainfall data and projections. So, uh, this incorporates the latest, um, uh, NOAA standards and manuals, um, so that it reflects the, um, the, the more intense precipitation events that we've been seeing in recent years. So, um, you know, those, those heavy precipitation events are, you know, more and more frequently overwhelming stormwater infrastructure that was not built with the expectation of the kind of rainfalls that are becoming more frequent. Um, so, so the, um, references to, you know, to those figures have been updated as well. trying to skim through and see what else is, uh, maybe of note.
What were you looking, when were you looking to do the resolution on this again?
We could do that next month.
I was going to say, let's push it off to next month, give council time to.
I mean, that was, that was the plan.
And the only suggestion would be to council is don't wait to next month at the workshop. Again, if you, and I know, again, you guys got this, you know, what, Friday? Um, so between now and next month, use this time to kind of look through it. If, if you think there's something that's missing or something that should be added, then let's come back to that workshop, discuss it. Get it worked out for that Monday to adopt a resolution again in, oh, nevermind, we have a conjoin meeting in October. So you're going to want to make sure you got everything. Again, make sure if you have something you want, um, email it over to us. So we can look at it, see how it can be incorporated in, and then get it resent out to everybody and kind of again, work it that way before, uh, before the meeting.
Does this get updated every year or is this like?
This has not been updated since the nineties.
Yeah.
Oh, God, okay.
Again, we're, we're not going to.
I think, I think we have added some plates to it here and there, but, but overall it has not been, you know, significantly updated for a very long time. This has been on the back burner for years.
It's something to check off the list.
And another, uh, this may not be a big deal to most of you, but we're also adopting a, a different roll curve standard. Um, the roll curve at Meads, um, seems to be a little easier to pull in and out for a lot of vehicles that are lower to the ground than the, um, profile of the kind of, uh, more curvy roll curve that's in a lot of the older parts of the city.
If you've ever driven.
Well, really, I'll say pre, pre-meads crossing, so. Um, you know, so a lot of, we, we get a lot of complaints about, about the, the, you know, the profile of those curves and people scraping the front of their car when they back out of their driveways. And, um, you know, we, we seem to have a little bit less of that with this, um, kind of angular profile that was used at Meads. They, they requested the ability to, to depart from that standard roll curve that we had. And, um, we rather like the, the design that they had, so we've incorporated that into the code. And my hope is that we will see fewer, um, you know, as we see more streets built, to whatever extent we do develop. Um, you know, maybe we'll see less metal plates and two by fours laying across the gutter at the end of somebody's drive, people's driveways than we see now with the current curves. So, and, you know, as, as we do projects like George and Middle Street, um, you know, there may be some, some flat straight curve there. Um, you know, but where a roll curve is applicable and we do a street project, you know, we'll be shifting to this new standard. So.
And again, this has been getting looked at for a little bit. It's been in the works, so, um, especially again, we'll be here all night for going through it. And I know you guys got a Friday, so take the month, you know, again, think, think on if there's anything you think should be included in here. Shoot it back over to me and Jim and we'll make sure it starts.
I got a couple of other little technical things.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say, because again, we'll.
No, it's wasting our time here on that.
Again, this is, this is a lot to try to do in one day.
We've had enough discussion today. Yeah, yeah, I'm tired.
Now, ta- take it, again, take it home over the month, you know, think on it. Um, it's not going to be on the agenda for Monday, but we'll bring it back up in October. So, other than that.
We've, we've also adjusted the easement size, um, on some of the roads to, um, to have a wider right of way to allow for larger, uh, utility easements. Um, you know, who knows, who knows what may be, you know, going in the ground 15 years from now. Although hopefully we'll update this again before 15 years, but, um, but it took 20 some the last time, so.
We did the speed limit standard in this one, right?
It still has 30 mile an hour design, which you'd still want to hold. Always do the limits lower than your design.
I, I know we had some discussion on that.
Yeah, we had a discussion about just incorporating it in, so we don't have to go back.
I don't remember if we thought it was appropriate to be in the construction specifications, um, rather than in our, um.
Who chose the speed out of Meads when they finished up the roads? Someone told me for some reason the HOA, but I don't know whether that's true or not.
I mean, they may have, they may have made a recommendation. Um, I believe that, I believe speeds may have been discussed as part of the, um, initial conversations about road widths and pavement sections when we were talking about the, the narrow, um, townhome, um, drives. Uh, you know, what the anticipated speed limit there would be, but I don't know if it was, I don't believe the speed limits are actually in the DARA, but I think they were discussed very early on with, with regard to the street widths and the parking on one side and things like that.
Okay. Yeah, I was just wondering.
But I'm sure the HOA weighed in on it also because they were, you know, a lot of homes were occupied before, uh, the speed limit signs went up.
Yeah. Again, we'll just, uh, I'm sure everybody will put some feedback in between now and October. So, um, we'll have a further discussion in October and make a determination on it all. Um, other than that, I am, oh, Monday, we are currently on trajectory to have two nominations for Monday for the executive admin assistant and the planning and zoning director. The format that we're going towards now is going to be when presenting a nomination, it is going to include, this is only for appointments of employees essentially. Um, it's going to include a resume and it's going to include a narrative of, of the narrative of why this person was chosen. And that they can complete the job, et cetera. That should give council a little bit more feedback than me kind of telling you guys on the spot up here.
I think we want to include the, um, the agreed upon salary, you know, to bring the person on board.
That'll all be in the narrative essentially.
Any other terms that may differ from the standard, you know, new hire, uh, routine, so.
Cause I will say for newer people, you know, when we do do, um, department heads, for instance, there's a little bit of a negotiation. Um, you know, some of them are coming from places where they had, um, they got, they occurred more leave, for instance, and how that translates when they come over here, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So that'll be in the narrative, um, for the appointments, you know, if there is any, um, any additional things that have been added than the base, uh, employment. So again, that, that'll kind of be the format and I think you guys will see that Friday. We, we still have interviews throughout the week right now, but we're kind of wrapping up. Um, so I'm expecting nominations Monday. Okay. Other than that, looking for a motion of adjournment.
Pilled.
Looking for a second?
Second.
All is a favor, signature five, I say an aye?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.